If everybody could please stand for a moment of prayer and silence, Mr. Paul Schmidt will lead.
My pleasure, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everybody maybe see this? Uh, may I please have a roll call?
Yep, sure. Mr. Tankersley?
Here.
Mrs. Sharpchair?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mrs. Knight?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
And President Coulter is absent with notice.
I apologize. Uh, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes of the last meeting? Uh, seeing none, the minutes will stand as approved and written as distributed. Uh, reports and communications, uh, I'm starting off with Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, sir. Uh, if you would join me up front, Mr. Lovett, we have a swearing in to do here. Look at that, I didn't even have to call you down. Wow, she's already doing a great job. Here we go. There's only two reasons that we ever have a bunch of police officers or firefighters in the room. One is because the chief's giving a report. And the other reason, a better reason, is because we're swearing in an officer who either in a new capacity or being promoted. And this is Megan Burke, who is being sworn in for the first time as a Sharonville Police Officer. So, let's learn about Megan. Here we go. Megan was born and raised in Mason, Ohio. Uh, growing up, she spent most of her time with friends and family on the softball fields. She graduated from Mason High School in 2020, went on to attend the University of Finley, where she received a scholarship to play softball at the collegiate level. Uh, while in college, she participated in various academic clubs and on-campus jobs, and she graduated from Finley in 2024 with her bachelor's degree in both criminal justice and psychology. Shortly after graduation, she became an employee of the Sharonville Police Department, where she was sent to the Great Oaks Police Academy to become a certified law enforcement officer. I like this part the best. She graduated as the honor cadet of her class in November of 2024. She's been in the field training program since that graduation and is set to be on her own by the end of the next month. Ready? All right, good. You know so, right? Yeah. Megan currently lives in West Chester with her boyfriend and their two cats. She enjoys spending time with her family and loved ones. She has learned a lot since joining the department. She's excited to continue to grow. Uh, she has loved serving the community she grew up in and looks forward to a long and successful career as a Sharonville Police Officer. And we look forward to seeing you grow in a long and successful career with us. Tell us about all this. I think all this family is yours up front, right?
Quite a lot, yes. Uh, my mom first, my boyfriend Andy, I have my grandparents, and then my aunt and uncle.
They're really proud, aren't they? All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am.
Megan Burke.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws in the state of Ohio.
And the city of Sharonville.
And the city of Sharonville.
And that I will honestly and faithfully.
And that I will honestly and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge of the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
To which I have been appointed.
Which I have been appointed.
According to law.
According to law.
Into the best of my ability.
Into the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Officer.
Thanks.
That's yours. Uh, with your permission, Mr. President, I think we'll take a short five-minute recess. Oh, wait, Chief Desmond's gonna talk first.
The three things about Megan that isn't apparent in just looking at her, other than she's an outstanding officer and everybody has approved and has made note of how fast she's moved through the, the training process. But during her background investigation, we, uh, we uncovered a little incident that she might want to explain later, but it does center around this traffic cone, which is rather entertaining. But on a more serious note, when she first entered the police academy, there was a serious breach of character, and she was really challenged with, uh, a fellow cadet's unethical behavior. And she stepped up and set herself apart from her peers and really made a name for herself. And that's just the first phase of what I'm sure is gonna be an outstanding career. So I just wanted to let everybody know, we were very proud of her for what she did. It was very challenging time, and she was able to put it past there and help her fellow cadets move past it as well. So we were, uh, we were impressed with your performance and very proud of you. Thank you.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess, so people can get pictures, make sure your family gets pictures, all of these fine officers that are here to celebrate with you to get pictures. A lot of them fine, a lot of them not so fine.
There's a lot of them here.
And, um, before we do all that, as they get ready to do that, you'll start down there with Mr. Schmidt. Make sure you stay out there. Okay, we're gonna say five.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say the pillows have a collar.
Oh, yeah.
There's only one, but I'm thinking about it still.
But he is a good guy.
I'm sure.
I saw that, I'm like.
Um, yeah. All right, so. All right, um, rest of my report this evening, obviously, that's, that's great. Megan is, I think, gonna be a fantastic addition to, to our department. And, uh, it's great to hear, uh, the reputation that she's already creating. It's awesome to see. Um, the, about two weeks ago, we had our Sharonville, um, business appreciation breakfast. Very well attended, uh, was a great opportunity, uh, for our local businesses to get together. Uh, we had some really great guests, so a big, a big shout out to David McCandless for, uh, putting that together, uh, making that such a great success. Um, we had Horror Hound this past weekend at the Convention Center, which, uh, was another great activity that brought folks flocking into Sharonville, um, hopefully not running out of Sharonville because of what they were seeing, but, uh, they were there for a purpose. But always a great event and, uh, um, you know, the Fonz was here, so that's always a good, good thing. So, um, that is all I have for our report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Jim Lucas, our Safety Service Director, your report, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Just one thing, um, uh, we'll probably be reaching out to the CIC members, um, for a meeting, uh, likely before the next council meeting. Um, so if, if that, uh, for some reason we can't get a quorum, if you can check your calendars and, and let me know. Otherwise, I'll be emailing everybody, um, probably within a few days for that, uh, for that session. Legislation-wise this evening, there are five items up for vote. Uh, the first one is ordinance 2025-18 dealing with an appropriation amendment. Uh, if Scott can also address Resolution 25R-06E, that would be appreciated.
Uh, a few things, uh, at your chairs tonight were related party questionnaires as part of the audit. I think I got all but maybe one or two, so, uh, thank you for the quick turnaround on that. We have our, uh, annual audit going underway. Uh, you might have noticed from the letterhead, we are back with Plattenburg and Associates. We were, we were with the Auditor of State's Office last year, and we were previously with, uh, Plattenburg for the last decade. So, uh, they've done their cash testing of receipts and expenses, and they'll be back here in another month and a half, two months, to do some asset liability testings and finalize their opinion on the financial statements as a whole, so. Um, also, I think most, if not all of you, received an audit, an email from an auditor today with the Auditor of State's Office. They're doing an agreed-upon procedures audit. It was really quick. Most of it should already be over today. Um, on OPNF, they randomly select, uh, a sampling of governments from across the state to do, uh, agreed-upon procedures to support some of the data that they force into our financial statements of the liability for pensions. So, um, those have been in our statements for about a decade. Uh, we were randomly selected for O-Pers review last year and an OPNF review this year. So, we might dodge that for many years to come, so. Um, but pretty quick and easy, and they just kind of support the pension reporting, uh, to our, to our records on site. But you probably received a copy of the engagement letter today. Um, the two pieces of legislation, uh, first, the resolution, um, kinda simple. We are requesting to, uh, increase our capital asset threshold, at least as far as financial reporting goes. Uh, that's been at $5,000 for a couple decades or more. Um, and we're going to relate, raise that to $10,000 as, as sort of, as prices have increased, uh, inflation especially over the last few years, uh, but just in general over the last two decades. Um, what, what was getting captured by $5,000 was getting to be a little bit more monotonous, uh, every year. So, um, this is a very minor change in the capital asset number that shows up in the financial statement, but we'll really kind of cut down on the volume of stuff that we have to kind of handle, uh, and track. Um, and then ordinance 2025-18, um, this is an appropriation ordinance, uh, also requesting some returns of advances. Um, a few things going on here. Uh, first of all, uh, we put into, uh, the 2025 budget, a commercial street program into the street fund, uh, as we kind of finalized and dialed in, um, uh, the scope of what we would like to accomplish in that project. Uh, we realized we were a little bit short of, uh, where we wanted to be overall. So this is an additional $125,000 from the 201 Street Fund to accomplish, uh, everything in that. I think Steve has another piece of legislation related to said street program here in a minute, so he can speak on that project in particular. Um, there was a, a request from the Police Department for the Law Enforcement Trust Fund last year to kind of have a study completed on staffing levels. Um, those appropriations made in 2024 lapsed, um, so we've kind of coming back, re-appropriating that. Also, it's a little bit more money, um, as far as what's the expected cost from the Ohio Police Chiefs Association. Um, the third item here is ARPA First Responders Police, $111.92. We came in, uh, late January to kind of get, capture the remainder of the ARPA police, um, funds. Um, we were still working on closing out, um, 2024 when we came up with this number, and we out-thought ourselves and we consciously added this number, subtracted this 111.92 out, thinking we needed to and kind of reversing entries as we closed the year. It actually got shoved back in there. So, uh, we made kind of a faux pas in our calculation, frankly, just overthought that. So, um, this is correcting that, a- and will expend the last bit of ARPA First Responders, uh, police budget. Um, and then while on that ARPA First Responders topic, um, you'll see in Section 3 of the ordinance, uh, is a return of advance, um, for, uh, the two partial. Uh, we, 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 um, got back a couple hundred thousand, $250,000 each from the ARPA police and ARPA fire last year, uh, late in the year. Uh, this is the remaining funds, um, now that full reimbursement was received at the end of last year on those, and then also the ARPA bonus. So, that recoups that back to the general fund and fire fund respectfully. Any questions on that? Thank you very much.
Steve's here to talk about the next two, and then one of us will address, um, the final resolution.
Good evening. Uh, 2025-19E is authorizing, Safety Service Director, and to enter into contracts for our, uh, 2025 Street Repair Program, Preventive Maintenance, Street Preventative Maintenance Program, and our 2025 Concrete Curb and Sidewalk Program. These are, um, the standard programs we run yearly, um, budgeted amounts approved. Aside from what Scott mentioned, um, we are asking to appropriate an additional $125,000 for that commercial street. Um, there ended up being more curb work that needs to be repaired, um, than accounted for when we were trying to throw a budget number at it. Um, our street pr- or our street fund is quite healthy and can absorb that. So, um, from that standpoint, it should not be an issue. Um, are there any questions on any of that ordinance? All right. Uh, 2025-20E is authorizing, Safety Service Director, to dispose of surplus equipment. Um, in our 2025 budget, you all appropriated funds for us to purchase a new enclosed trailer for our mowing crew. Um, this ordinance will allow us to dispose of our old cargo enclosed trailer, um, that we were previously using for the mowing. We will use Hamilton County Auction Site for that disposal, if approved. Any questions? Can we talk about the resolution, Jim, or do you want to talk about? All right. Resolution, uh, 2025R-06E, uh, nope, R-05E, is declaring necessity and intent appropriate permanent easements and temporary construction easements for, uh, property owners. This is for our Mossdeller Road Improvement Project. We have two parcels. Is it two or is it one? We have one parcel now. Um, West Ery, our rideaway consultant, has been working with all these parcels. Um, you have passed some legislation with regards to appropriation to intent or intent to appropriate on Mossdeller previously. This parcel was one that they thought they had under contract. They have received some documents. They have not received all of the documents they need to close. Um, my understanding is they've received a signed... They haven't received all the documents that they need to close. Um, they are asking, they've asked us to move forward with this in the event that they can no longer make communication with this property owner. Um, they're still trying to, they're still hoping to get this documentation, but it's been about six weeks, um, with no communication on the other end, so this just starts the process.
Then an update on the, um, two others. The, I can't remember the property owner's, uh, formal name, but Ferguson, um, signed off on their easement. And as of a couple hour or two ago, I think all the documentation for the Army has, uh, has either been received or, or will be received. So, that's good news for the rest of the Mossdeller Road Project. The Kemper Road Project, we've told Warren to, uh, go ahead and finish the appropriation, so we can go out to bid for that. Um, so, these are moving forward.
We have a lot of paperwork going down this year.
I, I have one question, Stephen. Um, I, not on this one, but on 2025-20E. How much is that trailer worth? What's, what are we thinking?
Uh, I'm, how, how much do we expect to get from part? I, I would expect to get $4,000 to $5,000 for that trailer.
Follow-up question. How much, uh, is the new trailer? And then was there anything wrong with the trailer that you're getting rid of?
The trailer, we're get- no, we're getting rid of the trailer of just its age. It's, it was just time for replacement on it. Um, you start running into where bearings are gonna go bad on it and suspension and things like that. Um, it's still, it's, it's still serviceable. We wanna get rid of it while, while it still has value to recoup. Um, the new per- the new trailer was $11,600, I believe, is where it came in at.
Thanks. Thank you. That's it for the legislation?
Uh, thank you. I guess it's my report now. Uh, I have no report due to the fact I started this position, uh, 20 minutes ago. Uh, but I will say thank you for bearing with this, you know, bearing through with me. Uh, I hope Mr. Coulter is doing something immensely fun, so. Mr. Cunningham, our auditor. I'm sorry, I messed up. No, good. Terry. Your report, please.
No report, thanks.
Our auditor, Mr. Cunningham.
I do have a report. We're only, um, reporting through February, so I don't have, um, a lot of things that are newsworthy other than we're about 16% through the year, and we've only spent about 10% of that budget, so. Um, now, if you look at working cash, it is a little bit lower still than we were, where we want it, and a lot of that has to do with the fact that, um, there's a lot more encumbered. And so, it's been going to the first of the year, there's a lot of POs that were approved, probably in the tune of the first couple weeks, probably 500 POs that are approved in that timeframe. So, uh, a lot of that has to do with the fact that, you know, we got a lot encumbered at that time, so, um, still trying to recover from that, but that's a very normal thing as we head into the first of the year. So, um, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Uh, Treasurer, Mr. Iry.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Lovett. I get my own microphone tonight, so this is kind of nice. As, uh, as Mr. Cunningham indicated, we're, uh, 16%, I'm all, sorry, don't wanna get the double microphone thing going here. Um, we're 16.7% through the year thus far. Um, and looking at our current, uh, budget prog- progression, um, the, you'll, you'll see in the, um, in the file or the report that's on file, we have, uh, collected, uh, 18%, 18.4% of, for the general fund. The street fund has collected 24.2%, fire fund 17.8%, senior housing 19.9%, and convention, uh, center 14.1%. So we are above or right about at where we should be in terms of revenue collected. Um, for the, um, year-over-year comparison to February, end of February last year, we are, uh, general fund is down only 0.7%. Street fund is up 12.6%, fire fund is up 1.4%, senior housing down 6.1%, and convention center down 16.9. Uh, so that is just a comparison year-over-year, um, for all the, all of those funds. So, that is my report. If there's any questions, let me know.
Thank you very much. Uh, our Law Director, Mr. Lippert.
Thank you. I don't have anything to report. I can take questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any residents desiring to be heard before council tonight, Mr. Schmidt? No way? All right, I appreciate it. Uh, I'm gonna move on to council committees. Uh, Community Development, Mr. Tankersley.
Thank you, sir. No report.
Thank you. Uh, Budget and Finance and Project Oversight, Mr. Cook.
Thank you. Uh, Budget and Finance, we had met several weeks ago. Just wanna make clear that the report is on file. And Project Oversight, we were supposed to meet tonight, but we had canceled for, there was really nothing to discuss at this point. Uh, going forward, I were, will work it with administration. Our next time, we will meet for, uh, Budget, Finance, and Project Oversight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Community Services, uh, that's mine. Uh, we have no report this evening. Uh, our next meeting will be Wednesday, April 2nd, so it's a quick turnaround. Uh, 4:00 PM, uh, we are in the Community Development, uh, Room instead, because of court still taking place with the construction, so. Uh, Honored Citizens, Mrs. Knight, she's not feeling well, so Mrs. Sharpchair is going to be taking her place. No voice. She's feeling fine.
Feel better.
No voice.
Tonight, we are honoring the Blue Goose Sports Cafe for 20 years of business in Sharonville. It was established in 2005 as a family-friendly gathering place in Sharonville and surrounding communities. The sports-themed casual dining has become the place to meet neighbors and friends. So thank you, Blue Goose, for your 20 years.
Thank you very much. Uh, Law and Public Safety, Mr. Paul Schmidt.
Thank you. Uh, the next meeting of the Law and Public Safety Committee will be on April 1st, Tuesday, 5:00 PM, Administrative Conference Room. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have, uh, Rule Suspension Motions. Um, is there a motion for late delivery or rule suspension motions for ordinances 2025-18, 2025-19E, 2025-20E, and Resolutions 2025R-05E and 2025R-06E? Mr. Cox first, Mrs. Knight second. Um, all those in favor say yes? Those opposed say no? All right, those are... Those are pass. Okay, so, uh, unfinished business?
All right. Sure. This is the...
Uh, this is the second reading.
Okay, thanks. All right, sorry about that. Second reading of Emergency Resolution 2025R-04E, a resolution in support of State Issue 2, renewal of the State Capital Improvement Program on the May 6th, 2025 statewide ballot.
All right, uh, new business?
All right. First reading of Ordinance 2025-17, authorizing the, authorizing operation of underspeed vehicles at intersections on Chester Road. First and only reading of Ordinance 2025-18, amending 2025 appropriations for various funds and authorizing various return of advances of funds.
Is there a motion for Ordinance 2025-18? Mrs. Sharpchair, Mr. Cook second. Uh, roll call?
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpchair?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt. Ordinance 2025-18 has been approved. First and only reading of the 2025-18 Resolution.